Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I do not believe Carol was here, so we will skip past 2.1 and go to the call to the public. Do we have a call to the public? Ms. Gianna Kraft, please step up.
My name is Gianna Kraft. I'm a longtime resident of Lake Havasu. And a post on social media came to my attention this weekend and was in regards to three new teachers who were being employed by Lake Havasu School District. The post stated that housing had been secured for these three teachers that were flying in from India. And I would like to ask some questions in regard to the subject and to maybe the person who is in charge of possibly some type of exchange program that the district participates in. I would like some more information. After conversations with my friends and other members of the community, there were quite a few questions that came up in regards to this matter and this subject. So some of the questions that we have is, does the district participate in an exchange program? Do we know how many teachers are employed within our district that require visas? Is the board or the district in the business of providing visas for teachers? Are these teacher, is this a state program that we are participating in? Is this in response to a shortfall of teachers that we can't hire locally or within our state or within our own country? How do we vet these people? How are certifications checked? How are proficiencies within the classroom checked? Are they checked on a different time schedule or maybe a little bit more stringently than, say, a teacher that's been educated and certified from the United States? Do we know if there's been any reports or anything logged with schools or boards or the board itself in regards to teachers possibly struggling with language differences in the classrooms or students struggling to learn from these teachers? All of these items and questions have been brought up. Some of the parents that I actually spoke with did make statements. Their teachers are current, or their student, their children are currently students within classrooms from some of these teachers and their children do struggle. They do say that grades have dropped and there's been some incidents. One thing that was pointed out is that one of the teachers last year was maybe nervous about losing their visa and was sending students on a regular basis at the high school to the office to deal with some discrepancies within the classroom. So I would just like some, and I have a litany of questions. I've already been told my questions won't be answered here and I will be referred to someone directly.
Let me, let me just address.
Yes, I would love to. Thank you.
Kind of what I would like to say is I'm so glad you came forth because social media is something where people just say things sometimes and it's always good to go to the source.
Yes, and that's what I wanted to do immediately.
Exactly. And so I'm going to refer you to Dr. Stone.
Okay.
And she would be, and this is something we would hope everybody asks questions about. If you have a question about any teacher, you know, everything, work through the system, work with your principals, those types of things, come to the district. Learn about these programs that we are doing. So we would really encourage that you learn about it. And I would direct you to Dr. Stone to find out answers to all your questions.
Okay. So nobody currently on the board is involved with a program for visas or?
Well, that's not really our role.
A teacher exchange program of some type or anything?
That's not really our role here.
Right, okay.
The role is to oversee. And just like you, if you bring up questions, we always have questions for our superintendent.
I would imagine this is somewhere at a district level as well. So I mean, this isn't something that, I mean, all hiring is done at the district level and so on. So I would be happy to have a conversation with you. I would just wanted to come to public to kind of put this on record that I was asking some questions. And I'd like to further the conversation and find out more.
And what I would also ask of you is when you find out the answers?
Yes.
To report back on social media.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that. I actually.
And kind of sometimes allay some of the misinformation that sometime is out there.
Okay.
So I would, I would look forward to that.
That's a deal. I, I'm actually pretty good at that. So I will gladly go back out and report happily.
So I have your number and I'll reach out first thing tomorrow.
Okay. Well, thank you for providing me time and nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So next up, we have 3.2 Business Services, call for a budget hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members. Per ARS 15-901, the governing board shall prepare a notice fixing a time not later than July 15th and designating a public place within each school district at which a public hearing and board meeting shall be held. The proposed preliminary budget summary and notice of public, of public hearing were posted on the Arizona Department of Education website on June 12th, 2024. The district must adopt the 2024-25 budget and file the adopted budget with the Superintendent of Public Instruction, not later than July 18th, 2024. In accordance with ARS 15-905A2, districts that maintain a website must provide a link on their website to ADE's website where the district's proposed budget summary can be viewed. Districts must also email the school finance budget team a clickable link to their webpage where the link to the proposed budget was placed. A copy of the email and a screenshot of the website will be retained in the file located in the district's business office. The full proposed and adopted budgets are posted on the Arizona Department of Education's website, the district's website, and are made available for public view in the district business office upon request. I will again just probably a little more quickly present the proposed budget as this was proposed in length back on June 12th, as mentioned. So I'm going to review it again. Again, we proposed the budget. It remains open to the public for at least 10 days. In this case, it was open for about a month for public view. And I will go through this. There are some changes too that before I begin, just so you know, come later on this school year, I will come before you again to revise the budget. If not in September, possibly December, but for sure in May. So May, we have to do, as you know, a mandatory budget revision. That's a requirement across the state so that we reconcile and make sure that we are in alignment with the state as to what they're showing in their records and what we're also budgeting for in ours. The last legislative session, which just wrapped up not too long ago, there was an increase to the base support level, which I'll reference here in just a second. That will come before you again at a, at a future budget revision session to account for those added dollars that will be within our FY25 budget. So the purpose is stated there, as I mentioned in the item itself. The proposed budget presentation will include many of these forms and reports. The budget forms page, this is what it looks like from a very distant view, a high-level view of the spreadsheet. It's fairly lengthy, a lot of cells and data points to input based on forms that we receive from the state. There's a screenshot of some of those sample reports that were used that I put together this budget to make sure that we are in close alignment with what the state will report. Average daily membership, so again, this is where the school, where our students matter. So the ADM, the average daily membership, is the figures of our actual student enrollment. And that then equates to when we multiply our student enrollment counts, our average daily membership against the base support that I just briefly spoke about just a few minutes ago. That's what actually calculates to our budgeted dollar amount. And you'll see that here on, on a future slide. So that, that little star there, that highlighted area there, that emphasis area on the right-hand side, back in June, the legislature, they were still in session. So when this was proposed, the final numbers for FY25 were not released yet. Since then, we have new, a new base support level, base level amount. That $4,914.71 amount will increase to about $5,013 per weighted student count, which is about 90, about a $98 or so increase per weighted student count. As we calculate that based on our current projections, again, ADM is fluid. Our membership, our student enrollment fluctuates now that the state has us budgeting and receiving funds on a current year funding model. The amounts that we receive go back and forth throughout the year. As enrollment increases, we qualify for more budget capacity. As enrollment decreases, our budget capacity is reduced. So based on if we were to just take the current budgeted estimate for added, added, I'm sorry, average daily membership, with that additional $98 per weighted student count, we're anticipating around $650,000 in increase for fiscal year '25. Again, that will be reflected in a future revision that will come before you, either in September, December, or later on in May. The calculations page, this is where we have our preschool students, our K-8 students and our nine through 12 students. They're all calculated here based on proposed, proposed enrollment for fiscal year '25. You can see on the far right side, again, it's kind of small, but it's, it's there for, for people to view. And again, this will be on our website. We have a combined student enrollment when we're talking about category A and category B students at about 6,700 weighted student count. So that's what will be funded on is around 6,700 as a projection. Again, that number fluctuates. It's fluid. It moves up and it moves down. We like to see it move up because that means we're servicing more students. When you take that amount and you multiply it by the FY24 base, that again will be replaced with that $5,013 amount at a future budget revision. We are at about $33.2 million for our M&amp;O funds, our general funds that we would receive from the state in FY25. We would add roughly $650,000 to that should our enrollment remain flat, which would get us right there, close to $34 million. For district additional assistance, this is additional monies given to the district that used to go right to capital funds. A number of years ago, they allowed district flexibility. So they now call it district additional assistance instead of capital funding. And it allows districts to move that money either to capital or to move it in the general fund to pay for services, salaries, benefits, et cetera. So when we do that though, however, we run the risk of not having enough capital funds to pay for capital needs, equipment, air conditioning units, vehicles, any type of equipment or something that has a useful life of a year or more is generally considered capital. So historically, the district has kept those funds and moved them to capital and has, we have not moved them to the general fund for the purpose of ensuring that we have adequate capital capacity or at least a decent amount of capital capacity to meet our capital needs within the district. The bottom of that spreadsheet, you can see a historical view of district additional assistance. When I first came here, we were at an 85% mandatory budget reduction from the state. So we would qualify for almost $3 million in, in capital funding or district additional funding. And there was an 85% mandatory reduction right off the bat. So the amount of money that we received for, for the district back in FY18 was $316,000, which is extremely difficult to run eight facilities, 50 air conditioning units, sometimes on, on almost one building by itself, to try to maintain restrooms and every, keep our capital in good working order. You could see that that would be pretty tough to do with the square footage that we actually maintain. Thankfully, over the years, that 85% mandatory reduction was removed at the state level. So we have been fully funded for our capital needs since around 2023, I believe is when it actually, maybe 2022, where it actually was fully given back to the districts. On this next slide, this is a condensed version of page seven of the budget form. You can see there on column A, maintenance and operations, we qualify for about $34 million when you factor in $900,000 that we receive for transportation funding. We have about $17 million projected for carryforward, which is savings within the district, which then means our overall budget capacity is around $52 million for fiscal year '25. Again, we still have to take into account the increase to base support level that will come again at a future revision. Column B, that's the capital column or the district additional assistance column that I just spoke about. You can see that we will receive about $2.9 million in capital funding for fiscal year '25. We're using $355,000 approximately from Prop 123 in capital funding. So for a total of about $3.2 million in capital funding for fiscal year '25. Again, maintaining eight facilities, curriculum comes out of capital. So there's, there, there are quite a few items that are capital-related purchases. On the next slide, this is page one of the budget sheet. So this, this sheet exists so that we, when we put together the budget, and I put together the budget, that we allocate funds based on staffing, on our benefits calculations, any type of purchase services, supplies, electricity, gas, fuel, so many different things that come out of our general fund. And what this does is it shows, column by column, roughly what is budgeted. Now, keep in mind, we have savings that's also embedded within that, within this spreadsheet. At the far bottom right corner in that red oval down below, you can see that that's the $52 million figure that was on page seven, just a slide before this. And we reconcile with what the state would give us and award us for budget capacity. If I don't budget to that amount, the, that little sentence just below that, the little message below the red oval would tell, tell me how far I'm off in budgeting against what we're qualified or qualified to receive. And we want to make sure that we budget to the amount that we're qualified for so that way we can have local control. And that should we have reserves or not expend to that budget level, we, that would go into savings. Or if we exceed that budget level, it would just come out of savings. So budgeting to the capacity in which the state would allow us based off of our student enrollment, we want to capture every penny of that again, so we can control those, those funds here at the local level. Down in the far left corner, I just, I always put this down there for examples. Funds, object code 6100 is your salaries, stipends. 6200 column is your medical insurance, other employment benefits, payroll taxes. Purchase services are your 63, 64, and 6500 column, kind of there in the middle. That's for staffing services, sub, subcontract that we have. Those are outside services that we would procure that are needed for the operations of the district. 6600 are supplies, warehouse items, fuel, gas, electric. And then 6800 we have for other, which are typically your dues and fees, bank fees, dues for belonging to like certain groups or organizations that support the district financially or professionally as far as professional development would go. That, that's what you would find in 6800. And generally, that column is usually pretty low when we're talking about budgeting for those types of expenditures. Budget expenditures, this is page eight of the budget form. This is the capital section. So again, there's your 3.2 million in that green oval down below that reconciles to page seven, which was a couple slides ago, showing that we are budgeting to the capacity in which the state will allow us to budget. The next slide will show us that, similar to page one of the budget form, that we are capturing every bit of our capacity to have these capital monies. And we're not leaving anything on the table to go back to the state. We're keeping everything here that we qualify for, for local decisions and control so that it helps, helps our budget. When we, when there's times that are good and we're saving, we're saving. And if we need to, if we need to invest a little bit more in a particular year, we can take out of that savings and invest. That's, that $17 million in savings that we currently have now is, is extremely healthy, probably more healthy than, than I would typically like to see. But as I've mentioned many times before, with the influx of federal COVID funds that came to everyone, we were very strategic in how we use that. We use that to the intent in which it was given. We use that to meet our needs that we would otherwise have used capital monies to, to utilize in its place. So whether you're a fan of taxation or not, or federal funds or not, it came to us and we utilized it based on the intent in which it was given. We didn't try to stretch it. We didn't try to push the envelope. We didn't try to bend it a little bit to, to maybe bend the rules a little bit. We, we were very intentional on this was given and to be responsible. We're going to use it exactly how it was intended to be used. And I'm confident that in our, in our audits that we've, that we've had. This, this slide here is classroom site funds, budgeted expenditures. This is the, what's also referred to 301 by staff. This is a proposition that was approved by the voters many years ago. These are additional funds that we receive for qualified staff who go above and beyond with extra items in which they would, would certify teachers typically would engage themselves in as far as plans, assessment-related measurable-type tasks so that they can hopefully assist our students in a, in a more meaningful way, going again above and beyond. This is something that almost every district in the state receives, again, by way of voter proposition. So we'll receive about, about $4 billion, 4.8 million, roughly. It's, it's estimated about 4.8 million. We have total budget capacity of about $6 million there for fiscal year '25. These last two slides, this is basically just a bunch of funds that are, that are accounted for on a, on a page or two to show state and federal funds that are very much earmarked for certain and specific purposes. Other local funds that we account for, so when people come and they donate tax credit, that goes into a specific fund for tax credit. It doesn't get commingled with other funds so that it gets mixed up in the general fund. It's very much accounted for and deposited in a very unique and specific fund. If people use our facilities, the same thing. If they rent a facility, the amount of money that is given to the district to rent a facility is unique and is recorded in a specific fund, individualized and separate from the general fund. While it's laborious and, and there's a lot to it on the accounting side and, and from my office, I am appreciative of that because it makes it so much easier to be able to show somebody that you gave us this money and it went here. And this is where it had to go. And there's, there's very little room for things to be mixed in with other pots of money. Again, lengthy, a lot of work. You have thousands of account codes in our general ledger. But when we're talking transparency and trying to be very transparent, that helps in that conversation. And this page right here is, is evident of that. The next slide, this is new for fiscal year '25. This is an estimated fund balance. This, what this does is it provides the board, it provides us as stakeholders, a quick glance and snapshot. These are estimates of what our fund balances are projected to look like as we end fiscal year '24. We're still in an encumbrance period. You'll see that here in a future action item when we're talking about vouchers. Every year, this time of year, there's an encumbrance period when we're closing one fiscal year and opening a new fiscal year. There's a two-month window, July and August, where we're able to record revenues into the previous fiscal year because it's monies that we've been waiting on. It's just they've been in the mail, in transit. So we're, we're able to record those revenues in the proper fiscal year. So that happens again July and August. Once August, the end of August comes, we shut down fiscal year '24 in its entirety and we're fully committed to fiscal year '25. So this is what that slide will, will help with in the future. This last page here, actually a couple more slides. This is actually the cover page of the budget. So this is what you see when you first open things up, when you open up the budget forms. This is the cover page. It's a quick summary of, of what budget we're actually looking at. You can see here on the top-left area, this is the actual proposed cover, what the board had signed this morning or this evening just before this meeting is the adopted version of this. So on the adopted budget, that changes to the word adopted. The adopted date is recorded, signatures are provided. And then it just provides just a general snapshot, the proposed tax levy there on the right-hand side of what the primary and secondary rate should look like for, for fiscal year '25. So all of that is found on the cover page. The next slide is not very relevant for today because we're all here. This was during the proposed meeting back in June. Just advertising and notifying that we would have this meeting today, July 9th, at 6:00 PM here in this building at this location. And then the final page is the page that I always end with. This is the snapshot of our updated website. And this shows exactly where you can find these documents and others like these right here on the district's website in financial transparency.
Is there any discussion among the board?
I did just have a question about how our preschools impact our budget because we do account for preschool students, but then the preschools themselves are self-sustaining, correct?
Yes. Yes and no. So there, there's a combination of funds that are given to us by the state. Yes. Yes and no. So there's a combination of funds that are given to us by the state, and there's a combination of funds given us by those who are bringing their students to preschool. So for example, if there's a student who qualifies for special services where they need special, like special education services of some sort, then they are then pushed through our student management system where that information is uploaded to the state, and we would receive funding for them because they qualify for special services. If a student does not qualify for special services, but their parent elects to bring them to one of our preschools, then they would pay a tuition. So in that example, going back to that one slide where you saw all of the funds on that one page, there's a Fund 520, which is called Community Schools, and those monies are deposited into that fund. Again, it can't be mixed with the general fund. It's very specific. Again, as complicated as it is with a bunch of account codes, I love it because I can go right to it, and I know that those are preschool funds or other community-type funds.
Just wanted to just add, appreciate the transparency. I know you answer our questions whenever we have them. I know that out there in the public, if you ever have a question about the budget or any line or whatever we're doing, I know Mr. Murray is very happy to listen and try and get you the information that you request. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Yes.
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 Action items. Business Services, National Purchasing Cooperative Contract.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board members. The district is invited to join the National Purchasing Cooperative by board. The district's objective in joining the National Purchasing Cooperative is to realize cost savings as a result of collective member purchases from vendors selected in the cooperative. The district is not obligated to pay a fee or other expenses for participation and may terminate the agreement with 30 days' written notice. This contract was reviewed by purchasing and legal.
Discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve 6.1.
I'll second.
Just one question. Any negatives regarding this? It seems like, okay, we can be a part of this, and it may save us money or not. Just any negatives to it?
There's not. We are adding this as another cooperative that we already do business with many cooperatives, as do many entities around the state and the country. So Mojave One GPA National Purchasing Cooperative here would just be another one so that we can recognize, as I stated in the action item, any potential buying power that comes from just buying in bulk. So rather than us having to shoulder all of it, we're tapping into the collective buying power of many to be able to do this.
So it gives us more choices.
Correct. And we're not obligated to do this. It's just, again, another procurement method that we can use.
Perfect. Yes.
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 Business Services, expenditure budget for '24-25.
Thank you, Mr. President, governing board members. Per ARS 15-905, the district must adopt the 2024-25 budget and file the adopted budget with the Superintendent of Public Instruction, no later than July 18, 2024. The district's general budget limit cannot be exceeded unless additional funding is made available through the budget revision process. The presentation of the budget occurred during the governing board meeting on June 11, 2024, and reviewed during the public hearing, which is today. The full proposed and adopted budgets are posted on the Arizona Department of Education's website, the district's website, and are made available for public view in the district business office upon request.
I move that we adopt 6.2 as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Yes.
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 6.3 Business Services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board members. Approval of vouchers for June will occur in September after the close of the encumbrance period, as I stated earlier. Student activity funds for K-12 and auxiliary funds for June of 2024 are before you tonight.
Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 6.3 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to informational, superintendent.
We are getting ready to welcome back our new teachers in a few short weeks, and the week after, we will welcome everyone back. So we're just busy planning for our start to the school year, and we are excited about all the positive things for our students.
Any informational from the governing board? I always have to have something to brag on. We have some national winners with FBLA, FCCA, the Minions. So this is both high school and elementary. Minions went to an international conference or competition and did well. And once again, this is due to high-quality teachers that we have here in the district, being very motivated teachers, spending a lot of time in their summer. So I just wanted to give a shout-out. All right. I lost my agenda. We just adjourned? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
And I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes.